Good evening, everyone. It is 7:44 PM. It is Tuesday, November 21st, 2023. Montgomery High School District, hoping to have a great meeting. First, we're going to start out our vote on the board's secretary.
Yes, Mr. Carlson. Here, Ms. Dowdlin.
Here.
Ms. Eli.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Vina.
Present.
Ms. Lecker, here.
Here.
Mr. Todd. Mr. Frank O'Meara.
President. Thank you again for your patience, everyone. We do apologize that we accept this discussion when we discuss confidential matters and not look into the public. But if required extended time, so if anyone will please rise for the presidency.
I would like to invite the United States of America to the Capitol, the Constitution, and the Constitution of the United States.
Everyone be seated. And at this time, we welcome the Secretary of Defense, who will deliver our Montgomery High School to the representative floor.
Good evening. The big chili, so I apologize if I'm shivering in here. Good evening, Board of Education, members of the community. The students of Montgomery High School are well and succeeding. This November, students have had a variety of opportunities to show their knowledge with the November S and Ts and the start of the Sealed by Literacy Test Day. Students of Montgomery have been celebrating diversity and culture, recognizing Native and Indigenous History Month, and hosting a successful Diwali celebration. Students also recognize Veterans' Day earlier this November. The winter sports season has begun with men tryouts for men who've been getting this week. We wish all of our students happiness, the best as well. The MHS marching band recently had an amazing opportunity in performance with the Rutgers University marching band. Students not only got the opportunity to perform with the band on the field for a portion of halftime before a crowd of 50,000 people, but students also got the opportunity to rehearse and hang out with the student band. Students of Montgomery are carefully delivering Disney roommates lists as they are being figured out ahead of our exciting senior trip. Students have also had the opportunity to participate in a statewide contest. You were song Your Voice Shut Down Redwood Station, which is a contest that challenges high school students to create peer-to-peer original music, songs, and lyrics in their own music style. The MHS Theater Department recently performed the Rainbow Curls by D.W. Brenner, based on an action from New Jersey history. This drama blends science, law, media, and social justice into a spellbinding story. The Class of 2025 hosted a successful volleyball tournament with MHS's South Asian Cultural Club sensation coming out on top. The Class of 2027 invites families to the Year of Winter Wonderland event on December 9th, my apologies, in the OHS cafeteria. Enjoy snacks, arts, and crafts, and a surprise visit from a Holly-Jolly fellow. Students are looking forward to much during upcoming homework-free breaks and Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sophia. The standing floor, the meeting board, and everybody who's asking for Sophia at this time. Hearing none, we will move to our superintendent's report and or presentations. Superintendent McGlocken.
Good evening, everyone. So that I have some repeats of what you just heard. The high school PTSD hosted another extremely successful two-day high school junior and senior student interview clinic. Students run through one day addressing interview preparations and interview etiquette. A second day of interviews was conducted by various community volunteers and district staff. The high school, all the students from the student-run Sensation Club and Deputy Mayor Singh, celebrated an evening of culture, dancing, teasing, laughter, and fun as we celebrated Diwali as one community. The high school marching band students were guests at the Rutgers University marching band and were treated like royalty for an amazing game day experience. They got to rehearse and hang out with the 330-member Rutgers band, watch the game, and then join them on the field to perform part of the Rutgers halftime show. What a great experience for our kids to play for 50,000 spectators and get a game day experience. Congratulations to our main thing, marching band directors, Ms. Armour, Mr. Merzurkowitz, and Mr. Resineth Witz, for making this possible and doing such a great job of all the students this season. Another repeat, the ball play made in girls was a huge success. Now to the middle school. From the many letters submitted, nine fifth-grade students were identified by the Montgomery Veterans Committee as letter-writing winners. These students were invited to read their letters aloud at the Montgomery Veterans' Day Ceremony on Saturday, November 11th. The celebration included historical military displays, representation of colors by the boys, and growth scouts, recognition of veterans present, greeting young Montgomery Lower Middle School students, the school selection by the Montgomery High School marching band, rifle salute by the American Legion Post 339, and playing of tax. Every October, Orchard Hill is visited by their magical friend, Scully the Skeleton, who watches over our cubs to make sure they are following the three cub four values. Scully may be found anywhere from the cafeteria, the library, or even the treehouse outside the early childhood center. Orchard Hill Cubs love the anticipation of finding them throughout the day. This helps to build our good community and reinforces our core values. Tomorrow is an early dismissal day. I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family and friends.
Yes. Thank you, Superintendent McGlocken. So at this time, we have the pride of our agenda, our first public comment specific to our Action Agenda items. Any instructions we can spot? The Board of Education welcomes and encourages into the public. Members of the public are allowed a one opportunity to address the board of the action agenda items only for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board, not those sitting in front of you. Before you make your comment, please write your name and address in the Chrome address provided in the code. Be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, point of poison, or methods. Try to avoid your liability on the part of the speaker. The board discharges the parliamentary or discourteous remarks. The public comment courses of the meeting are not structured as question-and-answer sessions because these are parliamentary meetings. These are not town hall meetings. But rather offer the opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board will need to refer an issue to the superintendent and the number of her team if the issue is not being handled within the appropriate chain of command, typically starting at the Department of Responses and then be provided at the end of this session. To board secretary. Who's open our Action Agenda items to only public comment at this time. And please state the Action Agenda item. Will any community member speak during public comment without any of our Action Agenda items receiving? Seeing and hearing none, we will move to our community representative reports, starting with our NCPK report delivered by President Jen Don.
There we go. Change the podium around. Get my exercise. Good evening, everyone. Board members, community members, and staff who you see this now or obviously once recorded afterwards. First, I want to congratulate.
Speak to the mic. It's all.
I never hear that sort of thing in my life. Can't hear me, it's always so loud. Just want to congratulate Christine Harris, with Frank O'Meara, and Elton Smith Wallace on the recent election, and for your selfless service to the Montgomery community. Some events going on in the MTEA. Our annual virtual book series continues, and those are for EBS and working students. Every family who does participate gets a free book. The most recent one that we just finished a week ago is titled Diwali in My New Home. The story is Alice Pria, who was a student who didn't, when she moved from India to the United States, didn't have a community that really celebrated Diwali, and she was a little lost. And she found her way and then also shared her appreciation for her own holiday that she celebrated with the community, and it's a really interesting story. The next one's coming up on the 29th, and it's titled Water Walker. And it's a girl's love of water and her appreciation for and awareness to protect it going forward. So obviously had some good environmental themes going on there as well. So that would be the next one coming up. Anyone that's interested in any of these can check out our social media page, PTA. Can check out any of the PTA communications that go out, and also we sometimes put them in the e-dos under community as well. So there's multiple ways that we can find that and check it out if you want to participate. Also, we just recently had Veterans' Day, and all Montgomery staff were invited to partake in what we call Jeans for Trips. So we invite everyone to donate $5 in exchange for wearing jeans. And we did that on, I think it was the Wednesday, 8th or something like that. We did collect over almost $900, which was great. And it goes to a wonderful cause called GI Go Fund, and is to assist military veterans with different things: employment, access, housing, any help with healthcare, and even education. So it's a wonderful cause that we've been doing for many years now, and we look to continue that going forward. And when I say all of Montgomery's participated, we also shared out on social media, obviously shared with board members, I'm sure you got that email, and administration as well, and it was a great turn up. We're happy to continue doing that. With Thanksgiving soon approaching, very soon approaching, I just want to be thankful to work in a district that has passionate administrators, passionate teachers, passionate board members, who are really willing to work together and are committed to just seeing students succeed and flourish here in Montgomery. So that's what I'm thankful for, and I wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Don, and Nancy. The Board members and delegate representative reports.
Okay, so from the policy perspective, we did have a guest during our policy meeting. It was a representative.
Excuse me. You remember the committee, that part of the committee reports?
How's it?
Delegate and representative reports.
Thank you, Sophia. Actually, I can speak to like one of our delegates for the board members. So on November 15th, Anya and I, we attended the PTSD meeting at Allen High School. We attended only as the parents because we are officially appointed as the delegates of the board. But at the end of the meeting, we were actually asked to return to those meetings as delegates of the board. So I would like to ask our board president to appoint either he or Anya, the both of us, to be the delegates to the PTSD. I also want to share one of the new several great takeaways from the PTSD meetings. One of the high school students joined the meeting to report on her initiative she took to organize the Halloween Scavenger Hump for the students participating in the Play United program. For those who wonder who Play United program is, Play United is an initiative to create an inclusive community, working with all abilities, have an opportunity to enjoy and appreciate participation in sports and other games. This student created Scavenger Hump, then involved several different game paths, planned the logistics of where and when each game participant would be to maximize the positive game experience. She also customized games and prices to each participant, taking into consideration their individual interests, to make them happy, and to create a great memory of their time at Montgomery High School. I was truly looked by this selfless act of kindness, and I was impressed by her masterminds of planning skills. So I want to thank to our, I want to thank our high school staff for supporting her in realizing provision for the Scavenger Hump of the Play United program. And I really look forward to the PTSD game, hopefully as one of the delegates.
That's awesome. We're looking to do my thing, we're sharing that. Finally, very quickly, we'll go back to your feel after I'm getting the superintendent McGlocken. Board Secretary Trent and myself attended the New Jersey School Board's annual Montgomery High School students' meeting, the total 23. So we attended a variation of workshops. The School Boards Association expanded the conference this year. There were quite a few topics around leadership, the legal perspective, the government role, and communication. And there was this one course that stood out to me that focused on creating a culture of communication that meets the needs of the school community. And then there was a robust discussion around the cultural changes that takes place in towns in Montgomery, certainly experiencing that currently. And they talked about learning how to set the tone and develop key messages and choosing the right channels by which to engage each other eternally, you know, making certain that we are respecting different guidelines and protocols, as well as externally with our parents and extended community members. So we look forward to continuing to be recipients of this high-quality, you know, capacity building workshops that are under the school board's provides. So are there any other delegate representative reports at this time? Hearing none, we will do to our board committee reports, starting with the assessment beginning. And instruction.
So good evening, everyone. It continues to be a pleasure for me to serve as the Chair of ACI Committee this calendar year. Only one more month to go. The Assistant Superintendent Danielle Papa is the District Chair of ACI Day. We conducted a hybrid meeting for approachable and in-person participation on Wednesday, October 4th and Wednesday, November 8th. At the beginning of the October 4th meeting, the Director Group of Instruction and Professional Development, Una Borland, reported on identification and similarity tests for students with an LLD, Learning and Language Disability, at UMS. One is titled 100 Dresses, and the other Inside and Out and Back Again. 100 Dresses is a children's book authored by Elizabeth Nestings. It was published in 1944. The book features a publisher named Wanda, whose family migrates to Connecticut. Wanda's classmates see her as different and mock her. Wanda earns good grades, and she sits alone in her classroom, is teased and taunted, and claims to own 100 dresses and found 60 pairs of shoes, although she wears the same dress to school every day. Eventually, because of being subject to discriminatory behavior, her family moves away from Connecticut. Before that, though, the teacher hosts a poster contest of sorts to wear. Wanda submits a drawing of 100 breathtakingly beautiful dresses, and she winds up winning the contest to only wear half of her new dress left in the school district. Her classmates realize Wanda's talent, that those who wear her 100 dresses felt that they also wanted to apologize, but didn't know how or get the chance to do so. However, later, because of Wanda's kind nature and forgiveness, she informs the teacher to give her former classmates the drawing that she created. The main idea of this darling text revolves around challenging how we treat people who we see as different than ourselves. So 100 Dresses is a tiny story about the hurt inflicted by teasing and painful consequences for bystanders who fail to act courageously. Another relevant theme within the text includes ethnic discrimination, racial discrimination is one of the sides that have just proven to have an adverse impact on people. Inside Out and Back Again, authored by Bonnaun Lee, of the New York League, is a story about a 10-year-old girl who leaves war-torn Vietnam and migrates to the US. The team shows its now hope because of its thoughtful exploration of some important social and emotional themes such as war, culture, grief, repair, friendship, loss, resilience. author has dedicated the book to refugees around the world, hoping that they too will be able to find a home. But community members have the results of the spring 2023 NJSA student outcomes, of which was presented at last month's Open Public Meeting. Next, Una happily stated that our district is one of only about 30 public school districts that was awarded the HIT or High-Impact Tutoring Grant. The school district was acquired by the state to receive these funds in the amount of approximately $230,000. For right now, we have been awarded the grant based on a criteria. The state required the district to go out for an RFP for the tutoring vendor, and that process was completed and is on the agenda before 2024. So once we award the bid, we expect to be open in January of 2024. The tutoring company will receive training by third-party vendor and our internal supervisors. The tutors will have no less than a tutoring substitute certification and experience in tutoring. The grant period ends on June 30th of 2024, and the target group is students who benefit from Tier 1 interventions in grades 3 and 5. And then finally, October, the new Council Director Cory Doggato reported that MHS hosted PSAT on October 7th, and roughly 450 students registered for the October 10th PSAT, which was administered digitally for the first time. His report included the upwards of 200 people attended last month's admissions, game workshop at Montgomery High School. Cory posted about the Unified PE education, which began five years ago. So Unified PE is a unique opportunity for students of varying abilities to come together on equal terms, along fitness, sports, leadership, and wellness activities. UMass implemented Unified PE roughly three years ago, and Cory is looking to expand it to Allen, as it permitted. And as stated, the high school posted a terrific, amazing Diwali celebration. There were several other board members that attended, as well, and who hosted them, and it was a huge success. The Board of Education, you know, thanks Cory for his consistent, diligent, and open-mindedness. At the November 8th ACI meeting, the singular focus of discussion was around two state-inclusive curriculum statutes. Next. NJSA 18835-4.36 and NJSA 18835-4.35, one district policy, number 2500. So there appears to be a misunderstanding of both statutes, including complation with 188641, which is the Health and Physical Education Op-Down statute. Both are similar in the manner of a set of twins, yet like twins, each is unique in standards or parameters. So in NJSA 35-4, beginning the 2021 school year, it speaks to the policies and procedures pertaining to inclusive instructional materials. This means that when school districts are identifying instructional materials for all backgrounds, from schools of the district, a board of education shall adopt inclusive instructional materials that portray the cultural and economic diversity of society, including the political, economic, and social contributions of persons with disabilities and lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people. The instruction must highlight and promote diversity, including economic diversity, equity, inclusion, tolerance, and belonging in connection with gender and sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, disabilities, and religious tolerance, as well as examining the impact that unconscious bias and economic disparities have at both the individual level and on society as a whole. So the goal, it appears with this statute, was more to encourage safe and welcoming, inclusive environment for all public school students. And with 18835-4.35, it pertains to the history of disabled LGBTQIA+ persons included in the middle and high school curriculum. Thus, as a Board of Education, we must adopt policies that include the destruction of politically and economically contribution of persons with disabilities and lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people as part of the district's implementation of the New Jersey student learning standards. There is no Op-Down provision for either of these sections. And then finally, the district policy, number 2500, section on the responsibility of selection for media-centered resource material, states that the principal teachers, coordinators, supervisors, community members, and students are resources for suggestions in the selection process. However, the responsibility for coordinating the selection of instructional resources for the media center and making recommendations for purchase rests with the professionally-trained librarian media center specialist. The superintendent has final responsibility for the selection of media-centered material by professionally-trained personnel. Those recommendations are given to the board's investigation, and then the voting is seen. So this concludes my ACI report this evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to sit at the chair of that committee and to provide full October and November's report. If board members have any questions or comments at this time.
Can I ask a question about the High Effect Committee? I don't know if we're in action now or during action, because I just want to know more about the Kelly Education Services Committee, which I wish it.
That would be more a question for Superintendent McGlocken, or we can follow up with you, or with the team. The superintendent will need to obtain information from the school. Any other questions?
The Equity Committee report. That's the report for this one. And next, we have Operations Facility and Finance Committee for our second meeting. We'll deliver my report.
Thank you, Madam President. Board members and community members. The Operations Facility and Finance Committee met on Friday, November 17th, at 8:05 AM. Discovered, discussed a variety of topics, starting off with the turf field. Principal Heather Pinot-Lee and Athletic Director Chris Grundy gave a compelling presentation about the need for the turf field to be replaced. Mr. Trent stated that the turf field needs to be replaced, as its useful life of 10 years has come to an end and is quickly becoming a safety issue. Mr. Grundy stated about how often the field is used by various sporting, sports teams, PE classes, as well as the band, and there's scenes that are beginning to come apart, and we want to head this off before it becomes a safety issue. Mr. Grundy stated that they've already spoken to a company by the name of Keystone Sports Construction, which is part of Co-op. He's also spoken to other athletic directors at other schools, and they have been highly touted. The estimated cost to replacement will be $591,000. In addition, the company will offer a 10-year warranty instead of the usual eight-year warranty, which would take us into the next replacement phase. Mr. Trent talked about various ways to fund this endeavor. It was in the budget last year, however, other issues came up, so we removed it from the budget. Mr. Trent noted it's tough to get in the budget with the increase in salaries and a 2% tax levy. He stated that the first avenue of funding could possibly be through more Escher funds, because it is a safety issue. The next would be to use the maintenance reserve, and the third, final way would be to put it into next year's budget. Second item we talk about is the Escher Amendment. Mr. Trent stated that he will be completing an amendment to the Escher Grant. These funds are funds that came out during COVID, focused mostly on cleaning, health, and safety. He's met with the directors of security, technology, facilities to discuss how to use this money to benefit the district. First item was the installation of security cameras at the high school and the middle school. In addition, the need for new radios, since it is a safety issue. The new radios will allow schools, administration, and maintenance workers to speak with each other during an emergency. Mr. Brooks also purchased additional call books, in the hope that it will alleviate some of the burden on next year's budget, and sorry to go over the grains. Mr. O'Neill stated that the maintenance portion of the amendment will go towards each back repairs. I also noted that since the SAT exam will be all digital starting in March, we maybe need to look at improving our servers to withstand that increased capacity. Third item we talked about is the budget update. Mr. Trent stated the budget is now open to budget managers, and they have been answering their requests and wish lists. Everything is moving slowly, but will ramp up in the coming months. In January, need to know much more. It's crunch time, and we will report more to the committee. It's crunch time, and we'll report more to the committee. Next item we talk about is the increase in Oprah requests. Mr. Trent stated he currently has fifteen Oprah requests. He was recruiting several, several, they were with the committee, and it's taken hours and hours to go through. It's becoming a burden on himself and staff. And the last item we talk about is the Orchard Hill Schoolhouse. Mr. Trent stated there's a schoolhouse at Orchard Hill in this property. There have been discussions with the Harlem, Harlem, Genie Society about it. They're requesting the district to supply electricity to the building, but since we are not required to do so, and, but however, we are not required to do so. Mr. Trent said the building is owned by the society, but the land is owned by the district. Our maintenance, maintenance and grounds staff will clean up the property, but we will not be supplying electricity to the building. And that's it. Any questions from board members?
Hearing man now will have our policy communication meeting for final term. We'll let him turn. Thank you. Just an update on policies. We have a few policies that are going to be drawn for our first meeting. First policy is going to be on attendance, teaching staff members, as well as support staff. The policies, recent changes are going to reflect the attendance, and we're going to clarify and explain what the rate of absences means, what is the procedure calculated, and the number of days in school compared to the number of possible attendance days. Bottom line is there's a new change in the policy that's going to open up a little bit flexibility around attendance and days that can be taken off. So, that policy for teaching staff and support staff, that's three, two, one, two, and four, two, one, two. Another policy that's recently changed is our policy five five one seven, where the school district issued student identification cards. All students will have now going forward issued an ID card for a New Jersey statute. This will be for grades seven to twelve, which will be required to have also a phone number of the suicide prevention hotline on the actual ID. As far as strategic plan is concerned, I know that's something that everyone's looking for, forward to in the community. Thank you, Superintendent, for sending out the information to the community. I'm hopeful that folks from Montgomery are going to participate, participate in those sessions. This is very important, because this will allow us to kind of evaluate how we're doing from a school district perspective and really hear the voices of the community and what the community would like to see going forward. There is a registration link. If you go to the Montgomery Township School District website, you will see that. You can register and participate. There were three sessions, one in December, one in January, and one in February, so we look forward to that. Also, we had a guest at the meeting, which I think took up a significant amount of our discussion, was an attorney from Strauss Esme that we invited to really have a discussion around some of the questions that have been coming up around policies and their meaning. So, the discussion centered around delineation between the three categories of policies, whether they're mandated, recommended, or suggested. I was very pleased with my fellow community, my fellow members, board members, to see that Strauss Esme is going through an exercise right now, where they're going to reevaluate their policies and really assess, or at least give us a good understanding of what mandate means, whether it's mandated by law, whether it's a guideline, state guideline, or whether it's potentially a recommendation. That way, we can have a little bit more knowledge in regards to those policies and how we should be handling those for hours from this, right? So, I think that's very important. I was very pleased about that. And that drove the discussion around the policy five seven five six, which we discussed here before. I know Board Member Skeena brought it up at the last meeting as well. And I think what was great is the history that was given to us from a perspective of the revisions of the policy and why it's been handled, the way it's been handled, and the history from all the way from two thousand fourteen all the way to now. And I don't know if the community is aware, but there's actually lawsuits happening right now across different school boards. So, the attorney recommended that we wait and assess what the outcome of the lawsuits will be prior to us making any significant adjustment or changes. So, that is the plan for our school district going forward. And that's it. I don't know if anybody has anything else to join us on. I don't know if you have anything else.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, thank you, Board Member Jernigan. So, those dates specifically for our strategic planning, thank you for sharing that information. Tuesday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, five thirty to seven thirty P. M., all three meetings will be held at the Level Middle School Cafeteria. The second meeting will be Wednesday, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and the third and final meeting will be Thursday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Do board members have any questions? Superintendent Jernigan at this time.
Was the, the policy questions on attendance, they were just, are they just staff attendance policies? And there was no student attendance policy, right? Just staff. So, it doesn't really?
Madam President, on the, in reference to the strategic plans, would you just go over the, or express the importance of the community members registering for that event?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Secretary P. Todd. It was essential. We have contracted with the New Jersey School Boys Association, and they are the experts with quite a strong background and experience with providing support to the bridge to boards of education in the area of strategic planning, which essentially is the identification of goals over a multi-year period, and after by direction, efficiency, productivity, and drive for our school district. So, it was very important that prior to the meeting, that we are aware of the number of people who register to participate, so that the New Jersey School Boys Association will be able to identify the appropriate number of individuals required. The first session will consist of a statement of district address that will be delivered by Superintendent Blackman, and then at that first meeting, we will randomization format will be executed to place participants in rooms, and they will work in those rooms for the second and third meeting. The Board of Education's role is limited and really sort of passive in this process. We will absolutely be present, but it will be more in a role to audit and observe and to listen, and to listen to the community that are staffing, towards me, and all of those members that will be called to participate.
Is people can only attend one or two of those sessions as an advisable place to so?
Yeah, that is a thank you. That's a great question, though. It is acceptable. We know that we have busy lives, especially our parents in the district, the active children, the school-based children. The preference would be obviously to attend all three, but if a community member or even a staff or any participant is only able to attend one or two meetings, that is acceptable.
I just wanted to just clarify the policies on attendance, since that was a question. And the legislature was signed on July third, and it expanded the allowable uses of sick time for school employees. So, that definition has been extended. Hearing other questions? Thank you again, Superintendent Blackman. So, if you would be for assistance in the Tuesday, November second, and all applicable personnel are to discuss that and be able to share with the community at this time. Officers report for November, November is delivered on Monday, October thirty. So, now we reached the portion of our agenda for approval of the minutes that is recommended at the Board of Education, approved the minutes of the following sorts of education meetings. October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, executive session and business meetings, and the amended January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, business meetings. We have roll call for the secretary. So, I moved all the uncles. That was my bad. That was my bad. I moved, I moved the Board of Education approved the minutes at this time.
So moved. Okay.
Awesome. Roll call please for the secretary.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dallin.
Yes.
Ms. Fila.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Leila Jernigan.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Dr. Spencer.
Yes.
Thank you, motion heard.
So, the Montgomery Township School District Board of Education acknowledges that both comments to the board, that starts on page three. And now, we will have our second and final public comment at this time, and this will include new business for the Board of Education, campaign instructions read for the action agenda, island remains applicable. Secretary Assistant Trent and Paul, open up new business to the board public comment at this time. And please, community members, for those that do wish to speak, if you may, line up on the podium, so that the community members are aware that you will be submitting a public comment. This is quite really close, because I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Chairman Montgomery, I was surprised that public comment was not permitted at the board meeting on October thirtieth before the HITOPS vote. Community feedback is very important. There are many people on both sides of the issue compared to the comments. Could you please advise why this opportunity was not available? Also, Board Members Carlson, Fila, and Lieutenant Jernigan were actively engaging about the HITOPS relationship during the discussion portion before the vote. Specifically, Board Member Fila brought an exceptional value evaluation of the relationship, and how it's not supporting the needs of the school district. However, the rest of the board members were silent and brought nothing to the table regarding the HITOPS relationship, nor added anything to the conversation. It was only after the vote terminated, the vendor relationship was voted down, that Board Members Spina, Spence, Wallace spoke. It would have been more beneficial to you to escape their investigation into HITOPS during the discussion portion, when other members, board members could have addressed the issue they later raised after the vote to retain HITOPS. There were mentions of logistical issues with respect to the agreement with HITOPS. Let me preface this by saying I work with vendor and other types of subcontract every day. The fact that there was no termination clause, there was only one more day at HITOPS training left in the agreement, it's not a good enough reason to continue with them if they are, there are concerns. They could have been paid in full, but not asked back. That nothing was provided to show that HITOPS did less than they were supposed to do. Actually, Board Member Fila presented data that they did not perform or were supposed to do. No other board member questioned or commented on her, excuse me, I want to talk about my idea.
Do you?
Okay. I need to listen to you. No other board member questioned or commented on her presentation at the time she did, but why not? Terminating the contract in the middle of the year is not good. Well, that happens all the time. Again, only one more day with HITOPS remaining. Are board members aware that if we negotiate and amend contracts during the term, that breaking this contract looks bad? What vendors want to work with Montgomery Township School District? That doesn't work either. HITOPS was shown to have questionable practices. No one can fault Montgomery Township School District for terminating the contract based on a breach. Again, if all of they were pleased, there were no issues for future vendors. If anything, it would demonstrate to potential vendors that Montgomery Township School District is very diligent and holds a grievance to the letter of the agreement. So, given these logistical reasons presented as barriers to get out of the HITOPS agreement at this time, is it right to assume that they will not be moved and another vendor will be brought in in the future? Other public comments that were made, HITOPS teaches teachers how to have empathy. I find that statement quite insulting to teachers. That nothing in Project Veritas HITOPS video is questionable, that's quite debatable. School should be a safe place where students are loved and valued. I totally agree with that, but it's HITOPS relationship in our school district, the only avenue for students to feel loved and valued. Board Members Spence Wallace mentioned, I believe, that four members of the board member Lisa Shelby at HITOPS. Could you please provide the views of the board members that met with her? Lisa Shelby told the group that her comments in the video were taken out of context. Would anyone else expect any other response from her? Did you inquire what was the context? Also, getting assurances from HITOPS on HITOPS is not a reason to retain that.
I also presented some questions at the last public comment, at the last meeting. I also emailed them and emailed them again to the board. I have not had a comment back. I won't go over the background on it, but I'll just go through the questions again, hopefully I can get answers tonight. I think that there's no investigation and it's to be done. Where President Spence Wallace, can you help end the speculation about your doctorate degree? Just answer when and where it concluded?
Thirty seconds.
And where her dissertation can be found? Can you clarify your business and personal employment relationship with and compensation received from Rutgers University while you are president and board member of the Montgomery Board of Education? Can you advise why you received a fee or honorary having exceeded two hundred and fifty dollars from the Education Labor Relations Council in South Africa while you were president and a board member of the Montgomery Board of Education? And does the board not change its stance on leismandies?
Thank you, that's fine.
It was de facto an act.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your comments, if you want to do so, I don't know.
Can I just clarify my question before the question? I believe I heard, I believe I heard the community members say that there was a breach with the contract with HITOPS. I don't, I don't ever remember you saying they breached their contract. But.
So, they, they never breached their contract. Okay. Any other community member plans to speak? I see that signing in, it's one thing to begin to line up, so we know. Do you get it, Turk? This town's been through quite a bit. This town's been through quite a bit, and there's been a call for transparency and accountability. Part of this comes to our board president. So, with some investigation, it has been noted that you have two masters degrees, two thousand and one with education administration and two thousand and four, social work. But, your PhD was never confirmed, yet you sit there with a doctor in front of your knee. Would you like to explain?
This problematic procedure, open public meeting, is not a question-and-answer format. I will not render any response about my personal life or personal achievements, ever. So, that's a no.
Because if you had it, there'd be no problem to explain it. So, everybody here on the board, you support this? So everybody here on the board, you support this?
Your comments and questions are then always filed as Board of Education.
Christine Newman, Newman. I want to echo Mr. Miller's congratulations to Harris, Doctor Spencer Wallace. Thank you, Frank government, on running an outstanding, positive, uh, student-centered campaign and winning decisively, which I hope would convince all the ridiculousness that we listen to at every meeting. I think if we're going to ask for Dr. Spencer Wallace's CD, that we should get it from everybody. Why are we picking on her? I haven't seen anybody prove anything. I haven't seen anybody's transcript. I haven't seen anybody's grades. I'd like it from all of y'all if we're just going to pick on Dr. Spencer Wallace because I don't know why. We're picking on her because somebody's spouse can't do research to find the paperwork seeking, so everybody now or here is picking, there's no difference. Let's have it from everybody. Let's be fair. Okay? Um, I also have a question about, in our agenda, it says new business, it's bolded, it's capitalized. This is never new business. Um, I just wondered if that's something that can be enforced and we don't have to listen about. South Africa or drag queens or degrees or any of this stuff, waste our time week after week when it's more important to worry about student safety, student mental health, bullying, things that are really important to the students, not this crap that gets brought up everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Redson Pepper, Five Mystic Drive, Skilman, New Jersey. Vice President Todd brought up something that I think the audience may be overlooking. I'm sure he is not, and I'm sure, uh, Mr. Trent, the secretary, is not. And that's, I think I heard him mention 18 Oprah requests. That seems like an awful lot of Oprah requests. And while I know that there are times where Oprah requests are really valid questions about information that people really need, having seen the correspondence list in our board, yes, in our board, um, agendas there, I, I want to go back to something that former board member Rich Speck said a long, several months ago, it seems. I, I really feel, I hope that this board is able to focus on education, and I know I'm supposed to address you and not the people out there, but, um, there's a lot of frivolous things being said from this microphone. The board and the superintendent and the staff of this district really need to be able to focus on the important things that are being done in our schools. Um, it's wonderful that you received that grant for tutoring for the third, fourth, and fifth graders. That is the type of thing that we need to be focusing on as a district and to celebrating and talking about at these meetings, not frivolous Oprah requests that just seem to use up a lot of time and money. If we're talking about fiscal, um, about needing money, Oprah requests, they may not seem like they cost a lot of money, but when staff has to spend its time on those Oprah requests and therefore doesn't have time to do other things, that hurts the children in this district. And, um, there is, I don't have a solution. I just wanted to come say I hope that the staff has the time to spend on the things it really needs to spend time on. Thank you.
Thank you.
What any other community members deliver new business public comment? Please approach the podium at this time. I would like to assign some of the comments.
Ed Church, Skilman, New Jersey.
Um.
So, I'm going to pretty dress that up. Since everybody's wasting their time coming up here to talk, then obviously nobody should come to these meetings if that's all the point to take. Peanut Bayor can keep the comments themselves. Um, so, that being said, I've been asking for months, uh, when am I going to be able to get? What is actually in the kids' library, in the classroom? Simple question, pose it time and time again, still, I said I would do it at my own expense. Yet I still have no response. It's been several months now. It's not a hard question. Let's look at something further since everybody likes to apply and subterfuge here. Okay, so there's all these things about if, and this happens and that happens. There was a little incident about two weeks ago when there was, um, possibly a gun brought to school. So, yeah, no parents didn't get notices? Oh my God, that shocked me. So what happened was, uh, it was reported, uh, and I had first-hand account because I got a call from my daughter saying there could be a possibly a gun. So was the school put on lockdown? Were parents made aware that day? No, kids went to their classrooms. And eventually, an email was sent to the teachers. Over the loudspeaker, please check your emails. So are we taking safety? Uh, because obviously, education is not the priority here. So is edu, is safety priority? Why didn't we get notice? So I'll be operating that, and we will see about getting that information. Because what excuses that? There's zero excuses. So if I, if someone came in here and this was a classroom, you would say, oh, it's okay, let that child? Why was there not immediate police involvement? Why was there not immediate lockdown? Why weren't the parents notified? And instead, we got a call, oh, it wasn't that, it was something else. Well, I think my daughter's old enough to know when someone says gun versus someone says axe. So either the principal's lying, or she's blind, or the, or whoever.
There is.
So why are we don't have transparency still? So we tell all this hip stuff, but we don't know? We don't know what's going on? And aren't we going to use any permission? They shouldn't be seeing penises in classrooms because that's exactly what's happening. You ask for permission for a parent's trip, you ask permission for everything else, but not for movies? You don't get guys aware of any of these things? Okay, we'll see how this works out.
Thank you. So I move this miss to the Board of Education. Again, if you're planning to deliver a public comment, please line up and sign up for your members of the meeting. Approach the podium so that you're aware. Thank you so much. We have a lot of business.
Good evening, everyone. Darren Wallace. I've been a resident two years, but I had a son who just graduated last year. Zelda Spence Wallace and I, Dr. Zelda Spence Wallace, we have five children. Three of them just went to school here. Uh, I was holding the police movie here because I first wanted to thank them for keeping her safe, for walking her to her car before and after. Uh, I was amazed when I looked at them and saw all the pages that are written on them. For people who I, I love, I have named Montgomery my second adoptive mother. Uh, I have nothing but good things to say about the education my children received here. And so I have five children. I've got degrees from Dartmouth, Rutgers, Syracuse, uh, one is also Harvard alone. And my little guy is still trying to figure it out. So I hope, I think that Montgomery fits well. Zelda is not even on social media, so she's not going to answer your question. She's a private person. You got the right one to ask me. I mean, I'll, I'll go and look if she... Uh, I met Zelda in eight, eight, at Congress, after I graduated the CAF at this short jump in the city report. But Zelda, her dad is a secret service officer and a radio administrator. Her family were Republicans. She's also a track Hall of Fame, uh, inductee in Peter High School. Uh, she did a Rutgers degree, or undergraduate at Rutgers, and she has her, her masters, her doctorate at K. Now, I'm also going to talk about, you know, to Chilly, who I'm amazed got so much flack. From someone who I thought would protect her, someone who was a former police officer, I, you know, instead she chooses to come here and scowl at me. Amazing thing. Like I said, I have nothing but a spare for law enforcement. I was holding the bank to the police. Uh, but people who I, I love, who I was friends with on Facebook, who I lunch traded today, so I'd have to name you to talk, you'll figure it out when you get there, thinking that because I'm not with someone, somehow I'm her enemy and I'm going to look at you like my page and scan for pictures. As I did to my daughter, what did I tell you what I did? I did, and I'm going to share right now. And I'm amazed, this is one of my favorite pictures. And I'm amazed because you were friends. I remember when Jenny Church broke her ankle at Disney and Zelda pushed her around in a wheelchair. And if I make this up, somebody can go and clarify. You know, and then other thing I said that someone would attack Chilly, this is my other favorite picture. I, I blogged out, people weren't involved. This is a beautiful young lady at the top of a pyramid, and look who's that holding her up? That's my daughter, Chilly.
Hi.
I would defend the churches with my life. Have a nice day. I appreciate this whole question.
Is there any person who has not delivered new business that would like to do so? Please do so now.
You may begin. Regarding the safety of our school, um, about what happened with the gun incident, was a gun, question was, was it real or fake? But my question's on regarding, it was, it was a gun. Can you hear me now? It was a gun. It was just a question of was real or fake. I was told from a phone call from the school that it was a fake axe, which is not what my daughter said. She says she saw a gun and it looked real to her. So much so, to distress the whole thing. That's a really concerning factor because if it wasn't, she walked back to her class with a potential person with a gun in the school. It was very frightening for her. And I'm proud of her for recording it. But regarding this, is there, what is the protocol for lockdown? When you have a situation like that? Are the police to be called if there is a gun, even if it's a fake gun on the premises? Because what I understand from other school districts is that they would make a police report, give the seriousness of, in case there was another incident that led to something, then you would have dropped the ball. And then, our parents notified that there's a lockdown with this kind of a situation. So there are my three questions. Thank you.
Is that driven through public? What's the date of this alleged incident? What, and what school, what is, is a lesson to take place?
Montgomery High School.
Montgomery High School.
And it was the Thursday or the Friday before Halloween.
Thursday, Friday before when?
Halloween.
Halloween.
I have it all written on my calendar, I didn't bring it today, but my daughter...
If you could look on your phone and narrow it on that date, that would be helpful. Twenty-six or the twenty-seven.
I might have that right. Okay, I'm not for sure.
Thank you for answering my question.
But she was the vice principal and one of the counselors. And she left the counselor multiple times. She was that shoveling.
Your daughter, who's a high school student.
So this is, I think, a real serious matter, and I, I would like to know those three.
Thank you for bringing that to the Board of Education. It's in general, all of our coordinating meetings.
I just have a couple of follow-ups. Um, on the Oprah question, I'm not sure if I understand if the number of, um, uh, email correspondence corresponds to Oprah or bust. I don't see the correlation exactly there. Maybe that could be explained. As far as the breach with HITOPS, I didn't see, anyone said it was breached. I said that the data put forth indicated there was a breach. Um, for someone to come up here and talk about people not being able to speak freely or bringing these up over and over again, I didn't hear anyone talk about South Africa or, or, um, drag queens until you brought that up. But anyway, I can't address the public, I'm sorry. Um, however, when you say that people who come up here speak crap in the same sentence you talk about bullying, I think that's tells a lot about a person. Um, and as far as when it comes to, uh, people coming up here and talking about my personal life, I keep personal life out of the board business. I don't, uh, I think board business is board business. If I come up here and talk about board business, um, I would hope other people would do the same. Um, and keep my family who have not participated in any board business by coming here and speaking or writing to the board, they should be kept out of it. And I would appreciate that privacy. Um, and I also knew, Dr. Spencer Wallace, that you have allowed, you will not speak on your own personal matters as being a doctor or not, but having other people come speak for you is kind of disingenuous. So I don't know why you just can't get that answer if you have to put the material that you're a doctor in your, um, in your, uh, campaign materials in the past. It's a simple thing. I, I know you got it, I just wish you would say it so that the conjecture could just stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, I'm sorry. I've never been here before. I thought it's one time, three minutes, but since we can come back, originally, no one asked me to come. I knew I was going to wait until after the elections, and I'm so proud of the Montgomery community for voting in the champion and, I don't know, that's like, that's person to a thousand points. So I wanted to wait. I didn't tell anyone I was coming. No one asked me to come. You know, I'm a father, you know, if you have a daughter who's being attacked personally as a man, you want to step up. If you're going to have other women trying to intimidate your daughter, you're going to step up. So that's what I'm doing today. I'm stepping up. I have a bit of a little sense of humor, so I'm going to make it funny. I love every community. When I moved to this community in 2009, there was infighting, don't talk to this one, don't talk to that one. I remember going to dinner with people. I remember going to the church's graduation banquet at the house. So I'm not disparaging you, but I'm going to speak for my daughter, Chilly, who feels... So I'm not disparaging you, but I'm gonna speak for my daughter, Chilly, who feel challenging her, uh, her, how she's raised. She's, she's out of pocket, she's whatever. I'm just a father who's gonna protect his. So that's why I'm here, and I want everyone to know. I don't know why people do what they do. I had to convince Zelda that it's, it's politics, it's not personal, but it feels personal. Unfortunately, with my son, a young son who's a year younger, a church boy, little, great kid, they would spend time on football practice. I coached fifty percent of this, this year's graduating football team. And I'll tell you, they coach Wallace. You know, I came right in from Plainfield, Jersey City, Edison to Montgomery, and I bought what I knew I could bring to this community. I knew how to talk to kids. Zelda is a lifelong educator. I think you guys are lucky to have her, she's bringing that here. But things feel very personal. I was scared for her for a while. I don't know why it's to others. I just wanted to come and congratulate her, to graduate the talent for just banging together and doing what I think is right. Everyone has different opinions, that's why. You know, you don't have to hate, it doesn't have to be nasty. You don't have to scan a, a young lady's, uh, Facebook page to, to bring up pictures that's that nasty. I see more skimpy dress on the beach. So that's why I'm here, and I have no hate in my heart, but I have a fear. If you keep coming back, or should I come back to you? I'll.
Thank you.
Keep this in the public comment. So the Board of Education is now closed. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Can you repeat that? Can you see what you're doing? Would you please respond to any questions that you're able to do so at this time? But I do know why you're looking at those. I do know that the thought, um, is getting you on a matter that you can't about involving the gun.
Yes, the violence of involving.
Swiftly.
Do you remember the question? Has I stated all the questions and comments and knowledge and advice to Board of Education? And no, I will not ever render a response to a question about my personal life. That's not the purpose of my Board of Education responsibilities. My focus is on governing of high-quality education. Um, in this school district among the peers, setting the tone of a supportive work environment for our talented staff, watching the parent-staff relationship grow by the education's communication. My position is that I don't have any more or less authority than any other active Board of, Board member say to designate committee assignments into charity's open public meetings. We operate as a single public body, and because our bylaw is in best practice, do our state require implementing progress rules or parliamentary process during our open public meeting facilitation, our Board of Education delivers, and we take action. And the majority of decisions are the Board's. I don't personalize this responsibility. My personal life choices are my own, not related to my Board of Education duties. That's not to do with this meeting, nor is it productive, quiet, relevant, or aligned to the purpose of this meeting, which is to address the business of the district. The public has spoken via their vote and thinking. What the state has required to be a Board of Education member has been satisfied by each and every active Board of Education member sitting at this day's, voting unanimously. The Board of Education is and remains focused on the quality of the public education in my name. We look forward to hearing questions about the GAT program, closing the achievement gap, or how we plan to implement the, uh, the HIGR. And another shout-out to this Boilin' and Heard Me's team for a job well done there. I don't believe it's acceptable to waste our time on matters that don't directly impact this public school district. And I disagree with the community members' comment and request to ask for everyone's educational degrees. No one is interested in seeing those, but it's not a requirement. Our time here is valuable, is precious, is limited, and we have business to address, and that's what our focus is. You'll need to find another platform by which to facilitate any political or personal or whatever type of agenda. We could use volunteers in this district. Absolutely. Lunchtime recess, tutoring. We get JSI AAs and meet officials of the various sports that they regulate. And finally, thank you this church for the email. If you ever feel unsafe when you're sitting in these meetings, and after consultation with our Board Secretary and our Board Attorney, we encourage you to file a complaint with our local police department. Thank you for your email communication.
Now we're gonna go to our action agenda items, so I move that, uh, you go on action to approve action agenda items one point one, uh, to four point three. It's now over the floor for discussion. Have your second. Did I hear a second on that?
I said second.
Okay, great. The floor is now over for discussion. Um, so I just carry. So there was several vendors that put wuzzles in at the place.
Well, that's a state representative.
The, it gives. They, so those were, were ones that came back. My question, I guess, is obviously Kelly Education, the owner of the partnership, they're, uh, service, right, with a temp service?
Can both of you talk? Sorry, I have to verify that, I just need the same name.
Okay, so just because the, some of the other vendors are local, and I know that we have to, you know, go with our most best part of it, especially as, you know, something very large. Um, it seemed like there was, and we'll just go back to it, it's.
I can speak on it as well, since I have a part, sure. So will you return?
One in Hillsborough has, uh, advanced education, it, it has three tiers there. One to one, two to one, three to one, and the three to one, three is about comparable to the other. And then the Kelly Education rates are different for New Jersey certified teachers where we are going to use at least, it's an ad minimum substitute, we have a minimum in New Jersey substitute license, right? So I'm just, I wanna make sure we're making the best choice for the students as far as which vendor and not just the cheapest of those.
Oh, sure. So first off, I'll say that Kelly isn't the cheapest. Um, when the list came out from the state before we received anything, that Ms. Boilin had already, um, highlighted that one, the one she wanted. She has worked with personnel on there before. Some of the RFPs that you see returned, they did not meet our criteria. So when we put out RFP, we asked, we list what, exactly what we wanted. Now, since, um, you know, every state, everybody in the state, or the state listed all the different vendors we could use, a lot of these RFPs and these companies are just throwing them back at, at everybody, and they may not actually exactly fit what we were looking for. There's three of them that we've been, we weren't even going to consider because they didn't meet the criteria of what we wanted. And then when it came down to it, yes, it was the cheapest, but it also kind of worked out that that was the one that, um, yes, that was the one she had a relationship with, she felt comfortable with, and that's why she wanted to report that one.
Any discussion points?
Questions? Much of the board will go follow.
I have a question. For sure. And I think probably because I just, I never saw that item before. Item three point seven, that is appointment of record of school monies. I have not seen them with their collection before now in the district, and I don't know if I missed it, or this is a newer one.
Sure, so when you see the treasurer's report, when it comes to the monthly financials, um, that's what that person does right there. We call them records, how our monies, because it's this, like, new position of someone who's in the high school. So it's our treasurer, and in order for us to be ahead of the board group. So and it'll be on that April reorganization, when we do the school reorganization.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Carlson?
Yep.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Eli?
I have nothing except for item three point three, which I upstayed from.
Understood. Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Enam?
Yes.
Ms. LePierre?
I will upstate point three point three.
Understood. Yes, David?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Dr. Spence Wallace?
Yes.
Thank you. All motions clear.
Outstanding. We thank everyone again for participating in the Montgomery Township School District Board of Education Open Public Meeting this day, Tuesday, November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Happy Thanksgivings in every country, and I'm sure some of your family members are. I think I'm looking more at mine, that just reminds me, it surprised me this evening. Oh, I love that kiss. So no further objections. Enjoy your holiday weekend. I knew that we were doing the public meeting at this time.
Don't move.
All in favor? Any objections? Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.